Welcome to the Rockingham County School Board meeting for January 26, 2021. Thank you for being here this evening. I know we were postponed from last night. So thanks to all of you for coming out again or tonight to join us. We're going to call the meeting to order and the first item of business is to approve the agenda. So board members, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or discussion, board members? Please vote. The vote is four zero, so the agenda is approved. A couple things you'll notice, Mr. Breeden is not here this evening. He is unable to attend, but I know that this being Elkton Middle School, he probably was a very difficult decision for him not to be here. I'm sure that he would like to be here. Second thing is, is that this is our first time that we've gone out to a school to have a meeting in quite some time, other than Rockingham Academy. Those of you that are watching at home, there may be technical difficulties. Just Mr. Perkins is doing everything he can to make sure that the meeting goes as smoothly as possible, but please be patient as we work through this because once again, we've taken another hill and we're coming down the other side and we're going to, we're going to get across it, but there may be some things we continue to work out. So thank you for your patience. Board members, the next agenda item is our Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We'll take a moment of silence. I'd like to invite Mr. Paul Delagarza, Assistant Principal, to present our student recognitions. This year's recipient for volunteer of continuously show support with a smiling face and a dedicated heart. Thank you so much, Jeremy. If you'd please come forward.
Actually, I brought my own mic down. So therefore, we could, we can maintain our social distance. It is wonderful that you have volunteered endless hours here in Elkton Middle School. And can you go over to the microphone and talk a little bit about what you do or you have done for wrestling?
Well, I mean, it's, it's kind of a sport that a lot of people don't know a lot about. And so I just kind of jumped in when, it was a lack of knowledge for a lot of other people. It's not a big area for wrestling. And so I had a background and I was just able to be able to jump in and help when I can.
Well, we really appreciate that. My son wrestled when he was at, in Turner Ashby. So I can appreciate all that you have done. Thank you.
Mr. Delagarza?
Nice little drive. That was very nice of him to do that. This evening, we're going to recognize two of our students pertaining to character counts. One male, one female. I'd like to start with the young lady. This year's selection for the Brittany Lamb Character Counts Student of the Year. Diligently gives attention to detail on coursework, asks challenging, asks challenging and engaging questions, and displays a willingness to actively participate in class on a daily basis. This student not only strives for high academic standards, but is an excellent leader and peer among fellow students. Her academic integrity and active citizenship has modeled that of a superb student that has enriched the Elkton communities, community quite a bit. Congratulations to Corinne. Exceeds expectations in schoolwork and is constantly trying to find new solutions to problems. He is fun, engaged, a polite young man, very polite, and a strong leader and a member of the school community. Congratulations to June Randall, 2020-21 EMS Student of the Year.
Jude? Jude, as you are, just stay right there. We're socially distanced here. Jude, the Kelly Coggsdale Brittany Lamb Award is based upon character counts. And the character counts areas are caring, citizenship, fairness, respect, responsibility, and trustworthiness. And evidently, you are the pillar for all of these. And we say a great big thank you for that. And we have for you tonight a certificate. We have a all that you have done. And I'd like to add this, these comments. It said, "What lies behind us and what lies before us are tiny matters compared to what lies within us." And I would say after listening to Mr. Delagarza, that there is a greatness that lies within you. Congratulations. Jude, do you have, did you have people who came with you this evening? Can we recognize them also?
Dr. Schikele, Chairman Reed, and members of the board, welcome to Elkton Middle School. We are so excited to be hosting the board meeting tonight and welcoming you back into our great school. As I reflect back to March 13, 2020, when we found out that schools would be closed and leading up to where we are today and having the board meeting tonight, I have one word to explain the emotions. Wow, this has been an experience for us all. As educators, we have learned a lot through this time and sharpened our saw through new ways of doing things. For so many, including myself, there have been times that complaining or worrying seem to be the easiest. But Elkton Middle School stayed focused on the words of Barbara Pletcher's quote, "The real winners in life are the people who look to work or make it better." All of us at Elkton Middle are committed to walking beside our students to be winners school, seeing their friends, and learning new things is still evident within our walls. As you can see from the picture scrolling on the screen as I speak, our students are actively engaged in learning through collaboration, communication, creativity, critical thinking, and citizenship. Yes, it may look different than before, but we are using our resources, our technology, and our maker space for facilitating learning and bringing the five Cs to life in a new way. As of November 16, we had roughly 82% of our students return for in-person learning. And I am so thankful for the support from all of you to make this happen. I could honestly talk
And you know, even though we got to wear masks, it's better than being online where sometimes I couldn't get on my Zoom class because of internet connections and all of that. And it's just so much better to be back in school and in person and the teacher gets to help you. It's better than being online where you got to go on a separate Zoom call and get the teacher's help and all that. I think it was really great that we got back in school.
I think that is so much more fun and easier in school. Even though we have to wear masks, I am just grateful I'm back in school and back with my friends. I think that EMS is an awesome school.
I love being back to school because I get to see my friends. Also, it's more assertive than digital learning, and I think you learn more and retain what you have learned more.
I think coming back to school is really good for us. It's a lot easier than Zoom and just feels more natural than online school.
I really enjoy being back in school because I focus better and it's easier to interact with others. Therefore, I get my back in school.
Being in-person school has helped impact a lot because now we can do hands-on activities.
...all years with excellence and high expectations to be winners in life and make each day better. Thank you again for being here. You do for our students in Rockingham County Public Schools.
Ms. Holloway, thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it. Thank you for your hospitality and stepping up and being the first one for us to be back in the schools and for sharing those comments from our students. The resilience of them is very evident, the desire for them to be back in school. And, and this has really been very heartwarming tonight. So thank you for sharing that. Appreciate it. Mr. Dickinson?
I will add a little bit of personal testimony to that fact. I'm the father of a kindergartner and a third grader in Rockingham County schools. And they got up this morning and were disappointed that school was canceled. So they were very project and certainly one that's been an honor to be involved in. It was a collaborative project that started with Mr. McAllister's work. Then it came and involved the county public schools. That expanded to Rock Town History, which many of you know formerly the Harrison The Northeast Neighborhood Association, which was of course Ms. Sims' home community that she served for 57 years. And of course, Bridgewater College was a major underwriter of the project. And Lot's Wife Publishing helped us prepare it for print. As you may recall, we planned to hold an in-person event to debut this book last May at the historic Lucy F. Sims School. In light of the present circumstances, we decided and opted for a public webinar. Rather than delay the book further, we wanted to get it into the hands of students. And hopefully that'll take place this coming semester. That webinar was attended by over 150 community members that were mostly in this area, but we had attendees as far away as Denver, Colorado and Jacksonville, Florida in virtual attendance at that event. In addition to recognizing last year's Lucy F. Sims Educators of the Year, along as you may know, the NINA president, Karen Thomas, and the Reverend Dr. Edward Scott of Allen Chapel AME, a professor at Mary Baldwin University. Immediately following the event, the principal underwriter of this project, who wishes to remain anonymous, but I think the board may know this individual. So you may want to reach out to them. They have made it possible for every class in the 11th grade in Rockingham County, as well as Harrisonburg City Public Schools, to have a class set of these books. I hope you enjoy reading about Ms. Sims' powerful story and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board members, any questions or comments for Mr. Dickinson?
Thank you very much. It's, this story we've talked about quite a bit. We can't do enough to give kids a local lens to see see how that unfolded in their own communities. That's something that's a particular passion of mine, as well as the people that are my colleagues. National Board Certification is considered the highest degree of certification for K-12 educators. It's an extremely pages of written analysis of their teaching practices, along with evidence of student work. Applicants also sit for a three-hour standardized exam that measures their content knowledge of the various subjects in the social studies and that ranges from history and geography to civics and economics. It is also noteworthy that less than half of the applicants successfully complete this process and actually achieve National Board Certification. And Mr. Longacre has achieved certification not only successfully, but also on his first attempt. He is now one of 16 educators in RCPS to achieve this national distinction, and it's the highest certification in the field of K-12 public ed. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Owen Longacre for his notable success.
I was just sharing this with Dr. Olafur, but the very last piece that I had to pull together for a component portfolio was filming a 15-minute segment of class. And that filming took place on Thursday, March 12, which it was the very, very last day that we had students in the building. And I honestly don't know how it would have came together if I had waited just one more day. So I was very blessed and very lucky to have it all come together in that way. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I had the opportunity to be in that very class. That was my last experience with, with students before all of this unfolded. It was a wonderful class. Owen was also, as you may know, I think it was what I was recognizing you for a year ago, was your involvement on the Governor's Commission for African-American History Education. And one of his portfolios was on Langston Hughes number of other RCPS teachers, as well as administrators. We were in Richmond on the very top floor, and she was presented with an award, as well as a $1,000 check for that notable achievement. I'm pleased to add to that Mrs. Shiflett was encouraged by Mr. John Krugel, who is the Associate Director of the JMU Center for Economic Education, to take that same application and apply at the national level of competition, which of course is much, much more rigorous and numerous, exponentially more applicants enter that. And this past fall, she was notified that she placed third overall. Now, according to Mr. Krugel, the top three entries were all of such high quality that the judges had to score it to the hundred decimal point to separate first, second, and third place. And we're counting that as a first-place win. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dickinson, if my memory serves me correctly, you also are a National Board Certification person.
I am, yes. Thank you. It was, that was quite a rigorous process. And I did not achieve it in a single year like Mr. Longacre. Mr. Dickinson took two years. So I was quite impressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Congratulations, Ms. Shiflett and Mr. Longacre. Thank you for your service, your support of our students, and excelling in your profession. We are greatly thankful for you, having you here in Rockingham County and being part of our community. Thank you. We'll move into public comments. We have, no one signed up to speak before the board. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak before the board at this time? Is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak before the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into board member highlights. Dr. McWolken?
Thank you, Ms. Reed. The highlight for me this week is that I am so grateful that our school nurses have been vaccinated and will be participating in the vaccination of our entire staff. And Dr. Scheichel, aren't we starting tomorrow?
Yes, we will have 450 doses available tomorrow to start our vaccination program. And the nurses that receive their first vaccine dose at the end of December are actually due for their second dose tomorrow as well. So, they will be fully vaccinated by tomorrow.
We are grateful.
Yep, and for the other 450, it's their first dose. So, again, that'll take 28 days then for the second dose. And so, each week, we have a clinic, and I'll talk a little bit about that in my presentation as well.
And we're thankful for all the staff members who were willing to be vaccinated in these coming weeks.
Thank you, Dr. McWolken. Ms. Lohr?
Thank you. Thank you to the school staff and everyone who's allowed us to be here tonight. I'm so excited to be back in a school. I wish it was for a musical, but at least we're back in a school. Definitely Jude was a highlight for me. I hope he was a highlight for all of you as well. He's quite a remarkable young man, and it's just nice to see our students again because they're all remarkable. And today was the last day of the first semester, and I'm... That's definitely a highlight for me with high school students because they're going back on Monday. Well, mine are going back on Tuesday because I'm an L, but they're going back, so we're very excited about that. But I do want to thank everyone who has worked so hard, the students, the teachers, and everyone else. It has not been easy to do virtual learning. And for everyone just to stick with it and try so hard, I really appreciate it. So, thank you to everyone who's been working hard. Hopefully, it'll get a little bit easier, and hopefully, we can move forward and get kids back to normal soon. But thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Mr. Falk?
Thank you, Chairman Reed. I would just like to say that it is really, truly good to be in a school, and I'd like to thank you for the testimonial from the students. That hit me in the heart. I've just... I've sat and I've watched, and I've stood and watched, and sat back and thought about it. And the job that everyone in Rockingham County Public Schools is doing in probably the most challenging times that I've lived through is amazing to me. The dedication and the perseverance and the selflessness that so many have exhibited and continue to do is just... It's a memory I'll carry with me for the rest of my life, and I think it probably should be in the history that Dale McAllister writes next about Rockingham County's next chapter. Thank you all for everything you do.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Dr. Scheichel?
I have one recognition that we just learned about today, and I want to use that as my highlight. So, Phil Sotoli, a first-grade teacher at Lacy Spring Elementary School, has been named the Virginia Agriculture and the Class...
Dr. Scheichel? Next, board members, we have action items. We have the minutes from the last meeting. We need a motion to approve... Policy revisions.
Chair Reed, members of the board, Dr. Scheichel. This evening, we have three policies for your approval. All three of them are in the area of special education, and they revolve around the topic of restraint and seclusion and discipline procedures for students with disabilities. If you have questions, I'll be happy to ask Scott Hand to come up and answer them for you.
Board member, or Dr. Scheichel, do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, I recommend approval. If there are no questions, I recommend approval of the policies as presented.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding policy revisions. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move we approve the recommendations as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or anything comments? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries for zero. Thank you, Dr. Olafur. Thank you, Mr. Hand, for being the backup, just in case he had questions. You noticed I've been refraining from asking policy questions. We're going to move on to information items with Ms. Mass's favorite topic, budget planning. All yours.
Okay. Chair Reed, members of the board, and Dr. Scheichel. This evening, you have a copy of our budget book in front of you. Over the next few months, we will be adding to this book. This evening's focus is on all of the expenditure requests we received for the 21-22 school year. I'd like to show you the summary of the request and explain what information I've provided you in this book. If you'll first take a look under the tab marked "Expenditure", you will find the summary that's also up here on the screen. Most of the items you see here have more detailed information found in this book. We'll start first with transportation. You have a tab for transportation with the budget behind it. You'll see that there is no increase in their budget requests this year. We also have a maintenance tab, and you'll find the maintenance budget also in there. And the maintenance budget also shows you in detail all the projects that were requested from principals and the projects that Mr. Reed has determined for division-wide is best for us to do in the 21-22 school year. You'll also find an instructional and an academic support tab that shows the individual budgets of the directors and supervisors in the division. We also... Also, we have another 1.5 million in there, which would be the second half of the... Raise is about $1 million for our division. There are no increases in our other benefits, VRS, Short-Term Disability, Retiree Healthcare Credit, and Group Life. However, I have built in a 2% increase for health insurance. Talked with the county. We currently are sitting in a pretty favorable position. We may be able to have no increase, but we're not positive at this point. By March, we should have a much better feel as we meet with the consultants that we use and we look at where we stand related to the premiums that we charge versus the claims that we've paid. So, a 2% raise is $325,000. Also, we have a tab down there called "Various Division Proposals", and I ask that you turn to that one, actually. I'd like to talk about that. It's kind... You know, the tab is down at the bottom of your booklet. We have four division-wide proposals, and there's detail that follows each one of these. The first is our Tiered Systems of Support, and it's $620,000 this year. I should've advanced that a little bit. We have educational supplement increases of $151,000. You'll see the detail for that. Five was separated out to for supplements for others, other than teachers, and it would be $16,000. There's also improvement of certain scales, including the benefits of $912,000. As you know, we've been focusing on classified salary scales, and just in January, we were able to correct a few of those, which we were very glad to be able to do. For 21-22 school year, the request is for the Teacher Assistant Scale and the Behavioral Support Assistant Scale. Again, you can see the breakdown. That's a total of $912,000 to fix those two scales. We're also looking at some minimum wage issues and other related issues to the minimum wage going up. In January of '22, it is proposed that the minimum wage will go to $11, and in January of '23, it's to go to $12. And you can see in the detail that is provided to you what areas... And then, our last item on the summary is our Personnel Request. And again, there is a time... Finally, you'll find in this booklet also a tab for Fund 2103, and that's our Capital Projects Fund. And there are no capital projects anticipated for fiscal year '21-22. You will also find Fund 2203, and that is our Cafeteria Fund. The Cafeteria Fund has been relying on its fund balance last year and this year so far because of the pandemic. We will be talking more in-depth as we go through the budget process about the Cafeteria Fund and kind of what we need to do to sustain that because the minimum wage is also an impact on that fund. And so, we'll kind of talk about that in even greater detail as we move through the process. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have this evening.
Budget development, because I don't know what time of the night you actually work on that. So, it's greatly appreciated, all your work and the work of, you know, everyone else who's just been doing all the extra work that's required to get a school division in a community through a pandemic while doing their regular jobs as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Scheichel, COVID update?
All right, so this is, again, time for our customary... Going pandemic and what we intend to do to have students in the best possible learning environment. Again, as I just said, it's an enormous team effort, and you see many of the people who've really contributed. A lot of thanks that go around in this room to board members and to staff who have just done an extraordinary amount of work to make sure that we are in a good position to follow the science and to follow the direction of experts in the field and also deal, you know, with the pushback that comes, of course. As board members, you know, you see this daily. We either do too much or too little, and that's made it very difficult at times, you know, for us to work on what we see in the science and then, you know, make sure that we follow those directions. And again, without board support, that would not have been possible. But there's, again, a lot of people that worked on this. So, as of today, so this is just... Just came out, the school reopening plans in Virginia. There are now still 43 divisions that are fully remote, so you see those in green. That's a slight reduction from December. Last time this was updated, December 14, you'll see that, again, fully remote was 52 then, and is now 43. So, more school divisions that were fully remote are now moving toward bringing students back. And there's a good reason for that, and that is updated guidance from the Virginia Department of Health and the Department of Education. And I alluded to that at the last board meeting, and so I'll talk a little bit about that as well. In terms of the health data, still, the entire state is in red. This is the case count per 100,000 population. And early on in the pandemic, of course, this is what drove most of the decisions. Numbers are going up, and we'll close schools. And our approach from the beginning has been, you know, let's be careful. To remember that what we have to be concerned about when we talk about bringing students back is transmission in the building. And though... If mitigation strategies aren't followed and masks come down or if students spend too much time close together for an... Not what we typically... Not what we typically see. It's gatherings, there are private gatherings, there are other settings where the transmission occurs. And the cases we see in the buildings are a reflection of the community rather than the cases that drive the community spread. That's what we've said all along. And at the briefing that we received prior to the governor's announcement of the new guidance, VDH clearly made that same point. So all the information that they had looked at in terms of outbreaks in Virginia, there have been some. And an outbreak really is two people that are connected. So if one person gives it to another in a building, that's considered an outbreak. When we think of an outbreak, you know, in general conversation, we think large scale. But even when you only consider, when you consider that tight definition of two, there have been very few outbreaks in K through 12 settings, and they're usually very small. Per 100,000 and 17% positivity rate. Both of those are lower than they have been. We were at over 900 in December, and then we were at 1,166 two weeks ago. And so there is a reduction. We did see, of course, the Thanksgiving surge. But Christmas and New Year's did not actually result in a similar surge. Obviously, the numbers were already high. So with high transmission, we did not see that additional surge. But that's also because, again, everyone, you know, we enforced masks in the community. So the governor's executive orders certainly contributed to that as well. And, you know, we can see the impact, that it doesn't then result in even more cases. And we have to be careful, of course. You know, now we know of new variants that are common in Europe and other parts of the world. Brazil has one variant, South Africa. We have to continue to follow that because if they're more transmissible, you know, then, again, we have to always be up to date on which mitigation strategies are most important for that. But the third one, and this is what was mentioned in the briefing, the third one is important, and that is the ability of the school to implement the key mitigation strategies. And the five, I'll show those later, but you're all familiar with them. And for us, of course, you know, from the individual perspective, we're talking about hygiene, we're talking about masks and distancing and hand washing. And so we've always said, you know, this is what matters as well as a key strategy and as a key data point. And many school districts that just went fully virtual looked at the first two and weren't comfortable with the third one because it's subjective. You have to basically make a decision, you know, whether or not you're doing a good job with this. But early on, we said, you know, let's not forget about this because the original CDC guidance had said, you can have students in the building in red as long as mitigation is good. But in Virginia, that really wasn't the main decision point. But we did look at that early on as well. So the secondary indicators over the last seven days compared to the previous seven days, the case count per 100,000 population has decreased by 27%. And the other two are in yellow, as they were for most of the time over the last few months. A little bit of orange for a while in terms of percentage of hospital inpatient beds in the region occupied by COVID patients. Now, what we've done, again, from the very beginning, is look elsewhere. Look at countries that experienced the pandemic before we did. Look at other states. Look at what we've seen in the research. And this was just one example. You know, back in November, in, at the presentation to the school board, I said, you know, one of the benefits of all the mitigation strategies has, could be that we will see a light flu season. And we looked elsewhere. So the Economist did an article on the Southern Hemisphere, that they basically skipped the flu season. And the most likely explanation was the mitigation strategies. So just a few days ago, news articles in the United States, where's the flu? Cases have been dramatically lower this season. Well, when you look early and you look elsewhere, you find the explanation early. So we weren't really all that concerned that we wouldn't see a similar pattern here. Of course, people also got their flu shot. But it's important, when we look elsewhere, to see what the trends are and what we may see here. And so this was about the flu, but we also did that in many other areas. So when it came to, for example, driving community spread, VDH acknowledged that a couple of weeks ago. In November, CDC had updated that guidance already. So that, in general, schools can see transmission, but it's moderated by good mitigation strategies. We continue to do that. So a few days ago, CNN published a piece where they spoke to experts in the field, various parts of this pandemic effort, vaccine, masking, and so on. But they spoke to Joseph Allen, Associate Professor at the Harvard School of Public Health and also Director of the Healthy Buildings Program. And so what he talked about is that key strategies to have schools open involve following masking protocols. If, for example, the new variants become dominant, there are ways you can actually, without a fitted N95 mask, achieve an almost similar effect. And that is what some people are already doing, wearing a surgical mask and a cloth mask at the same time. And so according to his research, that achieves a 91% removal efficiency. So that's certainly something that can be a tool in the arsenal. And he also said that ventilation needs to be addressed. And that's not of the, one of the mitigation strategies actually that VDH and DUE have in their list of five, but ventilation. Ventilation needs to be addressed because of that potential of smaller particles lingering in the air. And there's a quote there. He said, "The secret weapon lies in portable air cleaners with HEPA filters, which cost a couple of hundred dollars each." And in conversations with other school board members and superintendents from other areas, you know, that's not a strategy that's been widely used. But it is because we can learn from countries that do some things differently and some that have experienced the pandemic earlier to then implement the successful strategies here. And so back in November, when Mr. Reed was able to find us portable air purifiers that you really, most people couldn't find air purifiers, he found them because these are At that early on. And then Wired magazine, and I, normally I try to also link the actual research articles, but there are so many in this article. Mr. Folk forwarded that to other board members, and there's a lot of good research in there about what we know about schools, kids, and COVID. Virus transmission is possible. The two examples that are listed in that article, we've talked about before, in Israel, schools came back with no mitigation strategies and had to shut down immediately again because of the outbreaks they had immediately. In Georgia, some camps, we saw that, where kids spent time together in close proximity without masks. And then it can happen. We also have seen recent research Factor rate of infection for kids has been increasing. And so, again, we have to make sure that we protect the kids. Actually, when they compared last year's scores on the MAP test to this year's scores, Math learning loss was more significant. But the most significant impact probably so far has been on social-emotional learning, right? And the mental health impacts. They are significant, and they also vary based on population groups. So the children that already have the most difficult environments at home, they suffer more than those that have a lot of support, not surprisingly. And so that's going to be important for us as we, you know, bring students back, that there has to be that focus on mental and behavioral health. And again, we're in a good position because of a lot of the work that Becky Hill Schifflett and her team have done for our Tiered Systems of Support project. Mitigation strategies, same story, are key. And then the new virus variants. So we have to make sure we pay attention to that and look at, you know, where we may need to up our mitigation strategies. But it's not quite clear yet what, you know, what the transmission in the United States is of those variants. Some have been found in the country, some of the others have not. So we'll have to pay close attention to that. And then, finally, this is, I just actually put this in this evening because one of, Mr. Breeden, although he's at home, sent me this. This was in CNN Health Today and in the Journal of the American Medical Association. Also, today, a study was published about in-person learning and what the precautions have to be. And then data and policy to guide opening schools safely. The links are there. Same story, universal masks, reducing capacity. We get a lot of questions, why we're not bringing all the kids back? Ms. Lauer asked that last time, you know, what about bringing all the kids back? You can't at six-foot distancing, right? You can't do that. Again, here, ventilation, even though it's not in the Virginia Department of Health guidance, ventilation is one of the key pieces. And contact sports. So in, there have been outbreaks recently in North Carolina and some other places related to sports. And the American Academy of Pediatrics suggested that in order to play sports, you need to insist on mask wearing. And again, we had athletes here, we had medical professionals here who asked us to do that. And so that's been our approach. Again, first response was, we will allow athletics, but only when all athletes wear their masks, and that has to be on our teams and the opposing team. So our schools had to reschedule lots of events because the other schools didn't want to play in masks, even though some had their students fully virtual, but they were okay with playing sports without masks. And we said, we won't play then. And we've received, you know, comments from medical professionals, you know, applauding the school board for, you know, supporting that stance. And then the question came up about postseason play. And there, again, we've taken the same stance. Now, we can't insist on the other team wearing masks in the postseason, but our teams will still wear masks. It protects the wear. There's a fourfold increase in protection for the person wearing the mask, a tenfold increase for the other person. And what we also do is require any athlete who plays in the postseason to be quarantined. So we will not take the risk of athletics bringing the transmission into the school. So athletes that participate in the postseason, even though they wear the mask, they will be quarantined and will be in the Home Learning Academy for the duration of that postseason plus 14 days. So we are not going to take risks for the, for the wrong reasons here. So the new VDH guidance came out just over 10 days ago, 11 days ago. And the first part that played a very small role in the original guidance now plays an enormous role. So implementation of mitigation strategies. So Governor Northam in his press conference talked about schools should have a default stance of opening and then to determine how we can open, how we can have students back, rather than saying, we'll just be closed and we'll wait until we feel, I'd say, if we need to figure out how to open. And based on all the research and what you already saw, that involves implementation of mitigation strategies. We also look at the level of school impact. It's not just that the community impact matters, but what do we see in schools? Do we see outbreaks in schools? So that needs to be the first question that is asked. And then we look at community transmission over the last 14 days or, and PCR tests are positive. And then we look at the risk of transmission in schools. So VDH, five key mitigation strategies, you know these. Again, interestingly enough, ventilation is not one of them. But for us, it has become really key because of, again, what we learned from other places and from the research. When we look at the level of school impact, there, you know, the transmission without school. Now, we don't have zero spread, but we also are not really at the medium range. So we have two outbreaks within a short time period or sporadic outbreaks, you know, in a single school. And so we are somewhere in between, low and medium on that. The step-by-step process, first self-assessment and implementation of mitigation strategies. So we'll conduct some audits of what our schools are doing, looking at the school Add other groups, right? And so just to look at what we have done so far, back in September, pre-K through first, returned four times a week, and then selected learners are what the Department of Education Needs groups to come back. And then, as we felt that it was safe based on the factors that we saw, we brought back grades two through eight. And then from here on forward, we are going to bring the other students back beginning next week, February 1st. So we are able to separate students by six feet. We are enforcing universal mask wearing. We have the ventilation in place. Sanitizing and disinfecting is still taking place, and so the mitigation strategies are there. Now, what it means is, if we want to remain in a category where we can say we are mitigating well, we have to reinforce that that is a key piece. We will be in schools, we speak with principals and staff. Low. And so, but we have to continue to enforce it, and we are certainly planning on Where, you know, the trajectory of this pandemic goes from here because one of the brightest pieces has been the availability of the vaccine, finally. We don't have the doses that we would like to have. We have capacity, obviously, to vaccinate more people. In Virginia, in our district currently, there are about 300,000 people. And the current allocation of vaccine doses is 3,400 a week, right? So that would take a couple of years to get through that. So production is still ramping up of the different vaccines. There are new vaccines in line to be approved. But Chief Holloway More doses for us in the community. And so educators are in Phase 1B, so that's the current phase. And so we set up Staff members will get their first dose. We prioritized those who work with students in environments where Education Department has worked diligently, you know, to add other mitigation strategy, whether it's face shields and working with education department has worked diligently, you know, to add other mitigation strategy, whether it's a face shields and and working with students individually to, you know, improve the mitigation. But those environments certainly we prioritized for the vaccine. And then anyone else who works daily in direct contact with students. So, you know, that's not me, right? So that doesn't mean I'm going to be getting my vaccine tomorrow. It's more important that the that our assistants, that our teachers who are in classrooms daily, you know, are first in line for this vaccine. So four hundred and fifty tomorrow, and then I believe we have something like five hundred and forty next week. And so then the increase over the next few doses, you know, for our educators. And then, of course, four weeks later, twenty eight days later, the second dose. they are guaranteeing at this point, again, it's always as of right now, that for every person who gets their first dose, a second dose is already get sick from being infected, but at least for, you know, more than ninety percent, that's kind of that efficacy number that you see for the different vaccines. But it does not mean that you can't get infected with the virus. And that also means that there's potential of spread even by someone who is vaccinated. So masks, distancing, all those strategies will remain in place. The estimate is that until seventy percent of the population are vaccinated, it's not going to go away. So by that time, then there's, you know, there aren't enough people left for the virus to make sick. And so that's that herd immunity where the estimate is that the pandemic would fade away. Of course, with for sure, you know, whether booster shots are necessary. So, for example, the, I believe it's the South African variant that they were concerned to answer any questions you have. And again, want to repeat that, you know, it looks as if we have followed all the right advice from the experts. Everything we learn just confirms that we're doing the right thing. And again, I can't thank the executive team and everyone else who's been working on this enough, of all the work they put in to really make this happen. And we can have the kids back next week. You saw that today. And I know every building I walk into, I get comments about how excited everyone is to see the kids.
Questions, comments, board members? We continue to appreciate everyone's efforts. We're just grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schikele. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin, Ms. Lor.
Dr. Scheichel, I'm wondering
Lynville Edom. Was there an issue with Lynville Edom?
Just how well are the kids
Seems so long ago. Yeah, we're still working through the different design options. So for a period of time, there was a sense that we could purchase what's called nitrate credits, that it would be permanent. And so the design that would be the clean discharge into a stream would still require those permanent credits. They would have been pretty pricey, but at a one-time expense. But those are now no longer available. And so there have been conversations about annual credits. With annual credits, of course, you never know whether they will be available in the long run. And so there have been conversations about either purchasing land that's adjacent to the school or having an easement in that area and actually discharging into the soil. And so those are still ongoing conversations right now. But the current thinking is that that would be the preferred option, would be an easement. We might hear back. I'm not sure if Mr. Reed has an update. He's been the lead on that and again, has during times when he had so many other tasks on his plate, also consistently worked towards finding a resolution that may work at Lynville Edom.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Mr. Fulk. Thank you. Dr. Scheichel?
Just thank you to Ms. Holloway and Mr. Delagarsa for hosting us, for the delicious meat. And again, to everyone else for, again, making it possible for our students to return in person at least.
long day. A lot of you are doing a lot of things, and it's taking time away from your families too, to some have reason, board members, to enter into closed meeting? Do we have a motion to enter closed meeting?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to provisions of Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one, A one, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation, and A two, one or more particular students specifically related to requests regarding compulsory school attendance based on religious beliefs that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a schoolastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Do we have a second? Thank you. Questions or discussion, board members? Seeing none, please vote.